All right, we're going to open the work session. Tonight, the first item on the agenda is school consolidation and Dr. Parrish is going to make a presentation to us on some of the information we've requested.
Yes, so this is in addition to the presentations that we've done for the past few months. What I have here on the screen shows you the different portions of the presentation I'm going to do, and this is based on the request that we received from you after the last presentation at your October board meeting. So I'm going to walk you through information about the Weldon Cooper Center methodology and how they get their enrollment projections, but also some conversation about sort of where we've been and why the researcher thinks we're going in the direction that we're going. Also, you had requested what would our capacity look like using the Cooper Center projections for 10 years out, so we'll do that, and then a little information about facility design for schools that move to a 3-8 or pre-K through 7 configuration from a school that was a different configuration prior to that. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the middle school facility study, so we've got some information for you tonight on that. So with that, I'm going to just do a reminder for you about the development that we're anticipating in our city. So as you remember, last month, I was able to do for some of this, I provided information about how many students we have received thus far. I've taken that out of here, but I just want you and the community to see again, these are developments that are approved by the city, and these are the numbers of units that then, that have been approved for construction in the city. So you can see, we do have a number of approved developments and a variety then in terms of the numbers of homes that we would anticipate coming from that. The next one are the projected developments. So certainly, the legacy has been talked about extensively in the city, so they have not gone through final improvements to date, they're still in the process, but this shows what they are projected to do in terms of the housing. Then also, and with Creek Estates, there's been, there's a plan out there, but it needs to be resubmitted, so again, it's a projected development, not currently an approved development. If it were to come to fruition, we would anticipate some students coming from that one as well. And this information was provided to the Weldon Cooper Center. A reminder about where we are and where we've come from in our September 30 enrollment, so you see all the way from 1996 to 2017, with our high being in 2006 with the total of 2,602 students. This year, on September 30th, we had, including pre-K, pre-K through 12, 2,139 students. We ran our enrollment last week, November 20th, just to see where we are with regard to that, and we're up by one student, 2,140 students. There have been years when we've seen a decline already from the end of September to this period, so the fact that we've, for the most part, remained steady is good. So I wanted you to see that that, that number's holding, since it's the first year we've seen an increase in enrollment, at least in the last 10 years. Again, Weldon Cooper Center projections, I shared these with you last year, I know on the screen, this is a lot of information, but I did put in red on the far right bottom cell, 2,571 students. So at this point, Weldon Cooper is projecting out with their 10-year projection that that's how many students we might have in the 2027-28 school year. So going back to the slide before that, where we had 2,602 students on 2006, you can see we're getting really close to what that high mark was for us in 2006. So that's just, again, a chance for you to see that data again, as well as those who may be watching on TV. So in terms of the Weldon Cooper Center methodology, I did provide you a handout that walks through the statistical work that they do to create the projections that they do, so you have those, and we can be sure to scan that and get that online as part of the board, on the school consolidation webpage. But I also spoke with the researcher, and he's the researcher that's been running our projections for a number of years, he's the one I work with each year on this. So I talked to him a little bit about, you know, talked to me about what went on leading to 2006, why are we where we are today, why the projections? Because Cooper Center folks will tell you that, you know, 10 years, you've got a larger room for error, because that's a long-term projection. Usually, what we're looking at are five-year projections. So what he said is, when looking at the 2006 number, that a lot of the boost in enrollment that came up to that point was tied to new housing that was built in the city. So as new housing was developed, we had families purchase the housing, they had children, and that increased our enrollment. What we've seen for the current uptick, talking from last year to this year, is what he believes that we're seeing is now that we're through the recession, that homeowners and precocious are now willing to sell those houses, and we're having home buyers who have children buying those houses and enrolling our students. Because for a long time during the recession, you just didn't see a lot of housing sales of established housing in our city and elsewhere, and if you're reading about housing in general across the state, across the country, you're hearing that talk right now. He does, did talk about the fact with the new housing developments that were on track to have in the coming years, that that's obviously going to cause an increase in enrollment for us. What he said that it's hard to determine on is how much more turnover we're going to see in that established housing in the coming years. So we saw a bit of a turnover this year, you know, is it going to last for a couple of years, is that turnover going to keep going? That's what's, that's what's hard for them to predict for us. He believes it's likely we're going to see more of that in the immediate years, but that might taper off, and then our enrollment increase will continue to happen as the new housing comes online in the city. So talking with him was helpful, and I hope this helps you give, sort of get a better picture of why we're seeing that 10-year projection, how we may have gotten to where we were in 2006 versus what was happening for us in the last 10 years. And we've talked about the fact that if people were staying in their houses and student, their children were graduating, and they weren't selling their house, we're not replacing students with students. So that uptick we're seeing is we're actually doing that now, and that's why we've seen it, even though we, we've only had one development produce a number of children, with the 26 children coming out of the new Victory Cove development, so hopefully that's helpful for you. So in looking at the projections from Weldon Cooper Center, while we have not been doing 10-year projections with them, as I mentioned, we've been doing five-year projections. So this is, these are two tables that show you how the Cooper Center did on their five-year projections when we look at that compared to our actual enrollment. So for the 2016-2017 school year, so that's last school year, what we were able to do was look at the projection that they made five years prior to that and see how they did. So what you see here, and obviously, five years prior to that, is the, the actual enrollment for the fall of 2011. So what you see here for the K-2 grouping, they projected that the enrollment would be 430 students, we had 388, so they were 42 under when it came to projecting for those grade levels. Then at the 3-5 level, they are actually 62 over what they projected. So in other words, we got, we had 62 more kids than they thought we would have at that school year. For the middle school, 13 more students than they projected, and for the high school, 20 students. So you see, they were a total of 53 students over projection, which is good, because if we're looking at their 10-year projections, it's good for us to know that they're probably pretty conservative in their projections, which this shows that fact, because we had more kids than what they projected. Even though we saw fewer kids in their K-2, we did see that they were under for their other projections. Realize kindergarten clearly is the hardest to project. We do do things now, like have kindergarteners register in February, so it's before the budget process is over, so we can try and nail down a good estimate for the next year, but it's always, it's always a challenge, both for Weldon Cooper as well as for us. So then we look at this school year. So again, this is based on projections that were done based on the enrollment report for 2012, five years ago. So here you can see, again, at the K-2 level, they overprojected, we were actually 54 students under, at the 3-5, 33 students under, but at the middle and high school levels, in both cases, almost 100, 100 students over. So again, we netted from their projections, 108 students. So again, they were conservative overall, if you look at it that way, because we actually had quite a few more students enrolled. This is not that we had an increase in enrollment, 108, 108 students. This is looking five years ago, what did they project our enrollment to be, and what was it this fall? So I think that this is good information for you to see, to get a sense of how they do in their projections on the long term, since we asked them now to do a 10-year projection for us. So, any questions with that? So next is school capacity. So again, you saw this very slide last month in your presentation, and those community members that may have watched us last month saw this, but I just wanted to remind you that we look at school capacity in, in different ways, but what we focus on is the functional capacity. How are we actually using our building for educational programming, and knowing that, you know, are we over and under in the terms of the number of students that we can house in the building? Again, our staffing is based on the Virginia Standards of Quality in terms of their requirements for us with teacher staffing. It's a firm number that we get from them, so that's what we use. Again, the functional capacity helps us know the capacity of the building for a particular educational program curriculum offered. So from year to year, that functional capacity can change a little bit depending on the programming that we use, and sometimes depending on how many students we have that have special needs that may cause them to need some different programming. So it does, it does vary somewhat over time. And again, here is what functional capacity takes into consideration, our special education programming, gifted programming, at the secondary level, the different electives, computer labs, the necessity to have a teacher work room for teachers, and the necessity to have conference rooms so we can have meetings with parents and other folks. So I just wanted to remind everybody of the school capacity. Because this slide then shows you, if we took our current capacity, our current functional capacity, and we look at what the Weldon Cooper Center has projected in terms of enrollment 10 years from now, this is what we would see as the difference between that. So in other words, if the functional capacity in 10 years was 548, as it is now for the primary school, our projected enrollment is 472, so we would have room for 76 more students in that school 10 years from now, okay? So the next one is the elementary school. Now you see, we have much less room for more, for more students. We only then have the capacity for 12 students using this, these numbers. At the middle school, we'd actually be over. In other words, we don't, we, we don't have enough capacity for 96 students. What is of note is that in 2006, the middle school had a trailer that had two classrooms in it. So when they were at one of their highest years, they were, they were dealing with this issue at that time by adding classrooms through, through the trailer, or learning cottages, as I like to call them, to provide some additional space for our students. I thought that was important for you to know when you're looking at us getting up around to an enrollment that they, similar to what they may have had in 2006. At the high school, we still have capacity for 131 students. I will tell you that we actually had two classrooms worth of trailers moved to the high school in 2008 after the elementary school closed, and there were some trailers available that, that, that they were using, just so they had more space at the high school, but as enrollments dropped, that trailer's been taken away, so it's no longer, those extra classrooms were no longer needed and doesn't exist, doesn't exist behind the high school. So again, I say to you, the functional capacity can change in the coming years, but this gives you some sense of if it were exactly as it is now, what would it look like with the enrollment 10 years from now? So I thought that was important data for you as well. We also received a question about some of these schools that have converted from, for example, the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, which was originally built as a middle school, but then became a 3-8 school. Did they, how did they do that with their facility? Since we were talking about if we consolidated, having to make changes to our facility. They made the switch three years ago, and the only real structural change is they needed to do is add restrooms to some classrooms. So they didn't have to make a lot of change in terms of their facility to facilitate having this program. Now, keep in mind, Norfolk is a large school division with many schools, so they also could do some sorting of their students into other buildings, whereas we have one elementary school, one primary school, one middle, one high school, so it would be easier for them to do this, because probably some other students may have been put in, placed and rezoned for other schools. We also, somebody on our staff talked to somebody from Swartz Creek Elementary in Russell County. So that was a 3-7 school, and is now a pre-K 7 school. So the school was designed as an, as an elementary school for grades, it became pre-K 7 last year, and the quote that was given it, we had plenty of room to make the change, so they did not have to do a lot of facility work to make that happen there. So, but we just, we called two different, so you've got a smaller school division and a smaller rural, and then a city school division, just to give you a sense of what others have had to do. So the next area that I want to talk to you briefly about, that we've got some information for you, is, because you asked about the middle school facility study that was done in 2013, where we were given costs for the different options that could be considered if we were to tackle the middle school in terms of making changes to that facility. So we went to the same architectural engineering firm that provide, did that study for us back in 2013, and asked that they update the cost estimates for each of the different options. So that was done this month, so this is very up-to-date for you. So what you see here is the cost for immediate repairs is over $5 million, $5 million. You may remember that, and the previous cost, it was over $4 million. So you can see the adjustment that's happened here. The renovation plan, eight, over 8.7 million. Then option two, with some enhancements to that renovation plan, over 12 million. The modernization plan, which we, which you'll see in another table, is the one that we used to sort of give you the median option, is at 15 million, 15.9 million, a little obviously higher than that. And then option three with enhancements now gets to over 22.3 million. Reconstruction, which is where you would take down the entire old section of the middle school and build a whole new section, leaving the newer section still standing, with the newer section being the section from like the 1950s, just in case the community doesn't realize new is really not that new. And then to replace the entire building, it would be over 31.5 million. As you may remember, from the, when the study was done in 2013, that number was over, was just over, was over 27 million. So you can see the increase here on what it would cost to replace the school. So I think this gives you a sense of the change, which we knew, we've talked about the fact that all along, we'd have to update costs on that 2013 study, but this does give you some good estimates on that. So another question that you asked is, okay, just to get a sense, with the modernization plan being the one in the middle here, number three here, what, what wouldn't you get if we decided to modernize the building? So what you've got up here in the first bullet, it tells you essentially what you get with the modernization, knowing that everything in option one and two, and 2A comes with this. And on a note, we are going to give you the entire facility study here this evening, so you can take that home and read, read through it if you would like to do so. But the modernization one addresses all aspects of the building, so that includes everything from updating and replacing finishes, to repairing and replacing building systems, and they would take into account energy savings, educational needs, and technology standards. So modernization really does seem like a good word to use to talk about what would be occurring at the building in option three. So if, just saying that option three, it was determined that you were going to work on the middle school and that you were going to take option three, the auditorium, gym, locker rooms, PE offices, PE storage, and mechanical space wouldn't be elevated and would still remain flood-prone. So remember in Isabelle, we did get flooding into the gym, because remember you asked, you know, where we had saw flooding? And we talk about the adjacent ramped corridor. When you walk in that side door next to the gym, and you may not remember this, but there's a slight ramp as you walk into the cafeteria, and the bathrooms are there, there's also a mechanical room there, that's what we're talking about with that ramped corridor, just to give you a sense of that. And in option three, we would have, need to have two elevators. It doesn't provide for a connection from the old building to the newer building. You may remember, we looked at, you could look out the window on the second floor of the old building and see the, the new building, but it's not connected by a hallway, so it would mean putting in two elevators so that we could have access by elevator to both second floors. Now, if you were to do option 3A, you still are not making a change to the gym that elevates it. The 3A option actually has you demolishing that back area where the restrooms are, and back where that locker room area is, and then putting a new, adding to the facility there so that you'd have new restrooms, new locker rooms, and it also, in that one, includes a team room. So when you have football teams, for example, playing off the back, and they come into the school, they could go into a team room rather onto the gym floor or into necessarily the wrestling room. 3A does also include the demolition of the auditorium wing and back. So as you remember from the tour, those of you that haven't, hadn't been in middle school for a while, the band and the chorus rooms are behind the auditorium, so the 3A option takes that whole area down, and you build a new area. We did ask them to run costs for a 750-seat auditorium, just so that we had a number in play there. Certainly, you know, that could change, but that's the difference really between 3 and 3A. And again, you still in 3A have the two elevators that would be needed for each separate building. So I think that gives you a sense of that. The other question you had was the longevity of this modern, modernization plan, and so what, what those architects that we work with said is that with the modernization being done, there wouldn't be a need for any major capital work in the foreseeable future, and it would extend the life of that school beyond 25 years. Now, likely, you would get much more than 25 years out, but there, that's what, that's what they're willing to put out there as the information for us right now. Do know that if your decision was to work on the middle school, it, new work would be done to evaluate our program, what exactly do we need, and what, what do we want to see occur? So much of it would likely be what's in the plan, that was, the plans that were offered, but I would, I would foresee that we would make changes, knowing, okay, this is what we want to do. So it might look a little different from what's actually in the facility study, and the architecture firm, you know, certainly understands that point as well, so. So this takes us back to the, again, the comparison of the five consolidation scenarios. So this is the money that you could recapture in the operating budget if you were to consolidate the schools here. And we do have the note there that for the maintenance utilities, grounds, insurance, savings, it doesn't address any increased costs that might come with increased square footage, because the next slide will talk again about the capital work that would need to be done if we were to consolidate. So we don't know exactly what those costs would be when you're adding square footage to the middle school, I mean, to the, yeah, the middle school, or the primary, or the elementary school, or the high school, depending on what plan you were looking at. But this is the same data that you've seen at a couple of meetings, but I thought it was important to bring forward to you again today. Now, the next one, we have updated this, because we got the new costs of the different options for the middle school, and in some of the consolidation scenarios, it would require doing some work on the middle school. And as you may remember, in October, we said for purposes of the presentation, we'd use the median option, which is option three. So you see here the cost to do that, if you were to keep the middle school in, in the scenario A, where the middle school would become 5-8, or in scenario B, where it would be 6-8, but your, your elementary school becomes pre-K through 5. So I just want you to know, so you will, if you look back at your presentation from last month, the totals in columns A and B are different now from what you had from last month, when I did that presentation. I did, again, leave the note down here, that City Council was informed by Davenport that they could borrow up to 23 million and be within their financial guidelines. I talked today to the city manager again, and we talked about, you know, the fact that that is the case, that the $23 million keeps them within their financial guidelines, and also knowing there are some other projects that are on both the city CIP as well as our CIP, and we'll talk about that in a few moments. So that is my presentation on school consolidation tonight, so any questions or other information requests?
I have a question, as far as option three for the facility plan, where our, when it's talking about the auditorium, excuse me, 3A, that would solve the situation with high school band and chorus not?
Yeah, so if you did, that was part of the reason too, when we talked to the architect control firm that, firm that did the study, we said, can you cost out a 750-seat auditorium? Because that would mean the band, a high school band and chorus could perform in that, in that auditorium, and there would be enough space, knowing the sizes of the auditoriums they perform in over New York County in one year, even in Newport News, so yes. And again, we will give you the books, the study is very thorough, so it gives you the opportunity to look in detail. So this was just to give you enough of a sense, so you could carry on your conversation about consolidation.
Dr. Parrish, do we know, is this a 20, 20-year payback for the city? Is that a 20-year debt?
So for the sake of the, the listening audience, yes, that, that they do typically have the 20-year debt with a 10-year payback.
So after a certain amount of time, could we then, or debt, after, say, 10 years?
I can't answer that question. That's a question that we can get to the city, city staff and get, get back to you. I just know that the 23 million for their financial guidelines, they were looking at spending over a span of time, because some of the conversation with the Davenport was, you could borrow that money across years versus all at one time, and by doing it across years, that's going to actually save you, save you financially, rather than doing it all at one time. So I would imagine that would bump out the 20 years a little bit further, but I, you know, I can't speak for, for them, we'd have to get that information to you.
Dr. Parrish, the, the SOQ quality standards and the functional requirements that you've taken in consideration, those have changed over the years.
Yeah, the SOQs, those can, those can change any given year, because those are driven both by, you know, by the work of the General Assembly and through the work of the Board of Eds. So yes, those numbers can change, and we've seen them change. We've also seen recommendations come out for the standards of quality that then the General Assembly has been asked to approve in there, because we're staffing that way, but we're not receiving any funding for it. So to some degree, we haven't seen much change in the SOQs in recent years, because there's not been the funding available in the state budget to cover what the additional official cost would be for those. But yes, they can change in any given year.
Well, I ask that question, because we've gotten some input from, from some folks who've said, 45 years ago, we were able to stack 18 students on top of each other and do this. And that, just, I'm being funny with what they're saying, but we're adapting to current standards in order to do our analysis.
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions?
Do we know the exact numbers in terms of, of the proposed renovations for the middle school, in terms of what it would do to a functional capacity at the middle school, Dr. Parrish?
No, what, really with the functional capacity, and this is what, if we were to, to begin work on the middle school, what typically happens is a program study is done, so that, so that we can sit with the architects and say, this is what we need in terms of programming. So for example, you know, we know we need two rooms that conserve students with disabilities, you know, one, so we'd be using our current functional needs to drive that, looking forward to some degree, or building space that can, or not building, but making sure space is somewhat flexible as changes do occur, as Mr. Cass referred to. But that is how the initial work is done, and that type of work wasn't done for this study, because we were in no way at the point of saying, we're definitely doing this. We just needed to get, you know, look at the physical condition of the building, considering the program is as it is, what would it cost us to fix it? But we would have conversation and provide some information, so that, they wouldn't be doing plans off of that, the program study, but it would give them a sense of, to use Mr. Pappas's language, the number of boxes needed to put various classes or students in, not what they would look like.
I just have a question with regard to ADA compliance. The option three and the option 3A would allow us one elevator, so we would be able to access the second floor of one or the other half of the school, since they, it would not combine the two second floors, is that correct?
We'd actually have to have two elevators, because, yeah, because option three and option 3A does, does not have any connection built between the old and new section, so that's what we wanted to make sure was clear, that we would still, we would need two elevators. So when, if we do any work on the building, we're going to have to, you know, then we're not grandfathered any longer, so we have to be ADA compliant with current code. So for both those options, we would still need two elevators.
Excellent, okay, that's cool. Okay. That's cool.
Any other questions? Well, we are, yes, at a point where the first thing we've been asked to do is to respond to the question, do we want to pursue consolidation? And depending on what we want to do with that, then we have other things we'd have to do, depending on which way it falls. If we decide not to pursue consolidation, we will need to be able to communicate back to the city that we, what our decision has been, and then let them know, you know, somewhat what we're thinking about doing going forward. If we do want to pursue consolidation, we'll need to somehow, we'll have to have a public hearing and have some semblance of making a recommendation on what that consolidation will look like. So those are our options to, you know, at some point, I almost said tonight, it doesn't have to be tonight, if we need more information, we can push this again to the December meeting and ask the staff if we have enough time to get more information, and then consider it then, or we can consider tonight whether we think consolidation is a viable option. I think I've stated that coherently. Any questions about that process?
It seems to me like consolidation is kind of off the table, if we look at 10 years down the road. Not sure how to do that anymore. What we, I think what I asked for last month was to look at these numbers more seriously and see how close they are. If their numbers or their history stays the same, they could be a couple hundred students low. So we could be at 27 something, 28 something in 10 years, I'm not sure if we can really discuss consolidation anymore, but that's maybe jumping the gun. I don't know.
The numbers concern me too much. I'm just concerned that if we tried to do it now, we'd find ourselves in a bind.
If we just consensus, Wayne, so that way, Jennifer, same, also, Ms. Sheila? I put you on the spot.
In speaking with people in the community, I get a lot of feedback about the fact that we tend to keep putting buildings, and there's concern that that may not be wise. I understand the argument about consolidation, that even if we had lots of money and it wasn't a problem to go ahead and expand, that we might need to expand again, but that would be a new down on the side of wanting to have newer facility that would be on top up as we need it.
And take care of it for 25, 30, 40 years, yeah.
I think what concerns me is the actual money we're talking about here. And if the city can only fund debt of $23 million, and the city has its own CIP items, we cannot talk, we cannot talk about replacing a school, a whole school. Unless there is some other, I can't even balance my checkbook, so it's hard for me to talk about this, but unless there's some other funding strategy that's out there that, you know, that, like I said, if the city can do a 20-year debt, but within 10 years, they can expand that debt out further, I, you know, but I don't know enough about funding. But that's what, like Dr. Parrish said, we do have a couple other CIP items that are going to be put on our list. The city definitely has its own. Looking at these costs on the last page, or the consolidation scenarios, making the middle school out of a service, you're talking 8, 27, 23 million dollars, and that's more than what the city can fund. So that would be, all due respect to everybody in the community, I hear what they're saying, it's frustrating, but I just don't ask the city to do that at this time.
The ceiling on what we can borrow, based on what we can borrow if we keep our, so the question that comes out is, do other schools who borrow have that high bond rating? Or does the bond rating slip a little bit, and they borrow a little bit more and take care of what needs to be done?
Well, realize, actually, more so than bond rating, it's what's in the city's financial guidelines. So the bond rating is, you know, we have, the city process has a very high bond rating, and the cities have bond ratings, school divisions don't. It's the cities or the counties, because they're the ones that actually borrow the money, because you all are not a taxing authority, so you can't go out and borrow that money. But what's most important here is with the work that their financial advisors did, to stay within those financial guidelines, they can borrow up to 23 million. And I know Ms. Woodruff, you know, the question about 20 years out, we can get that information, but I suspect the 23 million is what's in play for a fairly long period of time for us. There was no presentation at Davenport of, well, you can do 23 million in the next five years, and then 15 years out, you can do another 10. I think that 23 million stretches them out for quite a while. So while the bond rating, you know, it's great to have a high bond rating, the real driving force on the 23 million is staying within the guidelines of those financial guidelines of the city, in terms of what they need and are able to do.
I also believe, I'm sorry, I also believe that as your rating goes down, the cost of borrowing money goes up. So you're getting less as you, as your rating slips. I'm getting a yes, but terror. Jordan, sorry.
Yeah, so, you know, for me, the value for me by consolidating is the fact that we save on that operating budget, that essentially, over a 20-year period, you know, covers, you know, the proposed consolidation scenarios that are outlined in items A through E of this capital project. Hypothetically, if we were to, you know, permanently renovate the middle school, we don't save on that operating cost on an annual basis. So I think that certainly has to be factored into the overall, I think it, you know, we're talking anywhere from what it looks like, you know, 20 to 30 million dollars or more, even if we elect to consolidate. But the value there is that we didn't save on those operating costs on an annual basis.
Which, just to add to that, you certainly could, but I think the hope through the consolidation was that was funding that, and even, I know at our council meeting, council members expressed that in our joint meeting earlier this fall, that that money would actually come back into the school system, so we could do the things that we, you know, would like to be able to do for our students. So I just wanted, because we did, that was mentioned by council members, I thought I should remind the viewing audience of that fact.
I wonder if the longevity statement that's made here, that it will extend the useful life by 25 years or more, do you think that, based upon the input you've gotten, would make anybody feel better? I mean, what we've done in the past with the middle school, based upon history, is we truly have mandated it, we've wired and other things. I'm not sure that's what's being proposed here, I hope not, because this is still a ton of money, and it is truly a renovation that should extend the useful life 30 years or more with good construction.
I think we're to the point now, we're at, what, 11 or 13 renovations at this point.
Yeah, there are 11 different additions onto it, but nothing that's completely, like this modernization, which would touch, you know, the entire building. This would be different from what's gone on in the past. And since I've been here, obviously, it's just been nothing to the level of this done in the building. We've done some things, I think, to enhance the building, but not to the level that a modernization would do. And as you know, when you took the tour, the building systems were an issue. I mean, that was primarily where we focused much of the tour, so those are addressed in this type of a plan.
We have a little bit of consensus, I believe, with some concerns, which I think we would have no matter which direction we went with this, because it's not a decision. Is, are there additional pieces of information that would make this easier to get full consensus? Or do we want to go?
Well, I don't know what I'm hearing here, but I'm proposing that consolidation is just off the table, because we need to start making another plan for these new 500 to 700 students. I'm thinking now more like 700 perhaps, if they're conservative, in five years. And we're along on a 10-year, there are numbers on 10-year timeline. So I think it's kind of off the table. I think the questions beyond that were about, if that's true, what do we do about the middle school? Am I right on that? So it's really two issues, I think, what I'm hearing.
I think they were asking the questions to make the decision on whether we should consider consolidation or not, is what I got. So I don't mean to disagree with you, but is that what I was hearing?
I guess my point is, if we say we can't consolidate, because it works next year, but not five years, or even seven years from now, that's one decision we could make, perhaps, sometime soon. And then we got to decide, I have to, I'd have to relook at, you know, options really four and five here, again, to refresh my memory on the middle school question as a question of its own. I need a little time to look at that again, to be honest. Because between, if you want to spend 22 million, it's pretty close to 26 million, you know, we just have to see what we're actually doing. And Dr. Parrish, do we have that kind of granularity on this? I think we had a pretty good breakdown in 13, specifically what we're doing, line by line.
We did. When you look at the book, there's a real breakdown of that. But here's what I would say, too, to that, is if the decision is that we are not going to move forward with consolidation, and now we're going to turn our focus to what do we do with the middle school, that starts a new process. Because what, by providing you, I know you felt, and rightly so, you needed a little information about cost for the middle school, what could be done, to try and help you with your consolidation decision. But we would start then with the middle school, one, doing the program, program addict study with an architectural firm, and then get a sense of what do we, what do we want in that building? Do we want a new auditorium? Or do we say, no, we don't want that, we would spend the money on that somewhere else? So in other words, this is a guideline for you, but if you decided that you were going to work on the middle school, I would envision we're starting a process where the decision would be exactly, what do we want? And you would pull from this study, but also, we might have new information and make that decision. And then, you know, then we've got to do the RFP for the A and E work, and, you know, so you've got months. But know that you're not wedded to the facility study. That gives you a sense of what you get for different costs, but I would envision, you know, you might, there might be some things you say we want, we don't want, to create the actual middle school package, for lack of a better word, of what you would actually do with it. But this gives you a sense of, you know, for the 15 million, you know, what you, things that you would get for that, changes to the middle school, and what modernization means. Does that make sense? Because when the facility study was done, and the decision was made, we can't move forward with this, because, one, we've got to see what enrollment's going to do, and what, are we going to consolidate? And also, in the middle of the recession, we don't have, as a city, we can't afford to do this with the middle school, but we needed to at least look at it, because nobody had, you know, it'd been years since that had been looked at. So you sort of would have round two, if you go to that of, now what do we do with the middle school? You've just got to make the decision about the consolidation piece first.
Hopefully with not increased scope and cost, because then we're, you know, bumping up against what we were looking at for the consolidation estimate. So we might make some changes, but it shouldn't significantly or materially be over these updated cost estimates, because we might reduce in some ways.
It could be that you do, or you change things out to some degree, too. So, and, you know, I would imagine you might have some conversation with council members, too, you know, about it at some point, whether in a joint meeting.
For me, the big piece of information last month that got my attention was the Weldon Cooper projections for the students. This month, it's the fact that our current middle school is going to be at 100 and probably 150 students out in the trailers in 10 years, if we don't do something about that. And it's already kind of showing some cracks and falling down, so that's where I am on this.
What do we do? I mean, we have a, it looks like a majority of folks who think that we should take consolidation off the table.
If I may, one more comment. Sorry, I'm talking too much tonight, but if we do consolidate, right on the back of that, it's going to be new plan. We just, that would just be foolish, I think, to do anything with consolidation, based on, if these numbers are right, and if they're conservative especially, we'd have to start rebuilding, and what, three to five? I mean, of course, I'll be off the board by then, but y'all can handle it, you know. But it'd be, I think it would be foolish.
I don't think you'll be off the board, because the way I see it, there's no way out of here.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, that was ugly. I'll go back through one more time. Consolidation off the table, yes or no? Sorry.
Thanks. So, I mean, looking at the functional capacity, though, in the schools and its current environment, though, you know, and the projections for 2028, even if there's a bump there, I mean, I kind of feel fairly strongly that consolidation should take place. Sounds like I'm being the minority here, but I just think with some of, all the underlying areas of saving on the operating costs, you know, ensuring that we meet with the architects properly to, you know, accurately go off the high end, so that we don't run into a capacity issue. I don't know.
But even if you save the $500,000, $600,000 a year, you still have a 15 to 20 million dollar addition that would need to take place to be able to house the students that are displaced. So to me, it looks like, okay, yes, you're saving $500,000, but you're 22 and a half million in the hole in a building, so.
That we can't even fund.
Buildings, if we're to call it consolidation, it's everyone, several of them under construction or renovated.
We do consolidate. These figures hold true. What do we do then?
Again, I think that's probably why we really need to sit down with the architects and go off the high-end projections for the 2028 data, in order to properly ensure accuracy when going the consolidation route. You know, I'm just going back on some of these statistical numbers and things like that, but, and the scenarios that are projected. And again, there will be some situations, I mean, obviously, we know that the elementary school is our newest building, so depending on the scenario, you know, you wouldn't potentially have to do anything to the primary school. Even at the high numbers in the 2028 data, there's still functional capacity for an additional 100 students at the high school for the current, for the current building at its current size. So I mean, I think the biggest renovation would take place at the elementary school, which is our newest building, you know, which is, I mean, that's line item C. I don't know.
Just a reminder that on the capital cost of the five consolidation scenarios, that we ran those numbers off of the 2006 enrollment. So that was run off of an enrollment that was pretty close to the projection of Weldon Cooper Center. And in no instance is it possible to just touch a building. So you would have multiple construction projects.
Of the scenarios is 23.5 million, and the city can only borrow 23 million, and not all of that is ours.
Do we know exactly what the city has planned for their CIP project?
I don't have that in front of me. I could certainly get that to you. I know there's talk, I know from attending the work session where they talk about CIP, there's discussion of a new public safety building for the police department, and I think fire rescue would be part of that, because the police department is in a flood zone, flood area, and doesn't meet, they have their own current standards that they're not meeting as well. So I know that's on there. I know there was conversation about public works needing some large vehicles that are costly. Some of that, I think, helps with like snow removal and trash and... that are costly. Some of that I think helps with like snow removal and trash and the other, other things. Fire trucks, I believe are, were on, is on there and that's a big cost. So we, you know, obviously our CIP, which we'll talk about, but you're very well aware of what's on our CIP. So those are just some of the things that I remember. I just don't have the city CIP in front of me that I know are specific to that CIP. The HVAC system on, on this, for this building was on here. They're trying to see if they can do something about that this year because we're having a lot of problems with the HVAC system here. But that was another item on their CIP. So they've got some big ticket items on their CIP as well. And we obviously also have roofs and other things like that.
Five million dollars spent over the course of the next few, just on immediate repairs.
If, if, if we request that funding from city council. In other words, yeah, we don't, we haven't put any formal requests to them for any funding, major, any major funding for the middle school because that we've left there until we figure it out about school consolidation. And then that would drive what we do at the middle school. So right now, the middle school still is on the CIP, is showing, you know, in progress until decisions are made. So that's not, the funding for that's not sitting on our CIP nor has it been funded. So whatever, if we were gonna do immediate repairs to the middle school, we'd have to ask, you know, city council would have to borrow money for that.
How, how balanced or unbalanced we are with this? Yes or no for consolidation?
No.
Not sure. I would still like to see a plan for consolidation.
Azura?
I'm not following the middle of the board here, the weird people in the middle.
We're looking at, we're looking at, this is the plan. You could combine this, this slide with, I guess the others. So we're looking at it here. What we're projecting functional capacity now in the buildings as they currently exist. And then the projected enrollment 10 years from now, giving us this difference. So 2571 is what they're projecting. It's about what we were in 2006 with these buildings. So to fix that problem with one less building is that 23, 24, 27, 28 million dollar solution and probably nothing less than that. Keeping our buildings, we have to expand a bit for the box, Mr. Cass's box story, to make it a little bigger inside for the 96 students you might have in addition. But we're at, it shows right here. This is how we fix the problem. I'm not following you guys in the middle there.
I mean, having taken a tour of the middle school, my biggest concern is that, I mean, for me, the, the middle school is either a tear down and a rebuild and nothing else, personally. You know, I'm not disagreeing that. I just, I just can't see funding a $20 million renovation into the middle school. I, I don't think you make it to a, to a standard that's.
I agree. But in my mind, as I said, that's, that's decision number two. So that's the way my simple mind works. So there's a consolidation decision and this slide, one you're, you're directing me to, shows me in my mind consolidation won't work. And then I gotta say to myself, and we have to say to ourselves, that's kind of gone.
Yeah, but Wayne, if we look at, if we look at that PES renovation though, and depending on how you consolidate the schools, right? I mean, we're building in a $22,000 expansion of the elementary school to add two more grades in. I mean, I, you know, I just think that.
And that helps your position how? Helps mine?
Well, in a, in a sense that we would be prepared for the growth back to those 2006 data. Like, I don't think we'd be in that position assuming that we meet with our architect and lay out clearly the Weldon Cooper numbers and properly allocate and prepare for the, for the growth that we hope continues to happen. It's a good problem that we're rejecting over the next 10 years. So I, I don't, if, if we, if we do our due diligence and meet with the architect correctly, I don't, I don't see why we'd be in a position to not be prepared for the growth that we're projecting over the course of that 10-year period.
But we're still spending $5 million and it's still more than 23 million.
And for that price, I can get a whole new school, a whole new middle school.
Right. But again, then, then, then what we don't get though is that $600,000 in operating costs savings through, through a consolidation. You know, that's, that's, that's being utilized to then service and pay back some of the, the debt that we service. Like, if we do the expansion, if, if we, let's just say we bulldoze the middle school right and do the rebuild right, for example, we don't save on any of the operating costs on an annual basis. Now, we may save some because obviously we have a way more efficient building moving forward.
Right.
I mean, so there's absolutely some, some gain savings through that. You know, is my, I mean, I, is my thought process.
I, I just don't see how we're getting beyond this $23 million that the city can borrow. That, to me, that is, that is not a roadblock. That's, that's a wall. We have gotten to the end of the road there.
All of these scenarios.
All of these scenarios exceed that. And if that's all the city can do, then I, I don't feel how, I don't see how, I, I understand what you're saying, working with an architect or anything, but with my limited knowledge, these numbers are pretty right on and might even be below once you get change orders and things like that in.
Right.
But it's, it's that $23 million that's not ours to play with.
It'd be one thing if the whole $23 million was being set aside for a solution to the school system.
Correct. Correct.
Dr. Parrish, I think any, where we go tonight, we need more information on, on money. Is it, what if we want to do, say, we, say we don't consolidate and say we want to do option three with enhancements as 22.3? Is that a possibility or not? Where the, where the rubber meets the road, is that a possibility or not? Are we stuck on the, on the 15, nine as the most we can, we can spend at all? And is it over a couple of years? How does that affect it? Cause you all makes a good point. No matter what we save, you know, literally none of this is possible on that wall in my mind. None of it's possible. So if we do that and go to this, what's the actual, what's the real number? My kids always ask me, what's the real number, Dad?
I mean, I think that's probably a conversation you would, in part, might have with city council, you know, and also knowing what's already, what's on your CIP as well that might also need to be funded, that you might want to take out of that 23 million. And then obviously the other things on the city CIP, which the city CIP is our CIP, we're members of the community. So, you know, I, I don't have the answer for, you know, how much of the 23 million could go to the schools versus how much would go to filling CIP needs for the rest of the school's CIP or the city's CIP. I can't speak to that.
Not very often. Just kidding.
It never happens. It never happens.
But I, I do think it's two separate decisions as well. I think everybody looking at the numbers, 24 million, I mean, it's over 23. So I think it's safe to take a vote if people feel comfortable taking a vote there. In my conversations with council members, it's not up to us to decide how that funding is done. It is our decision whether we need to do it. And if we're going forward or not, then like, like Chairman Cass said, we have a different plan. But we have to decide, and I think Wayne's is pretty adamant about, we cannot afford any of those five consolidation scenarios on the 23 million dollars. So I think it's safe to say at least at that point, I'm willing to vote to say, take consolidation off the table tonight. Now, what we do after that, obviously is gonna depend on how much money in the pot to play with, how much, you know, what we can get done. Like you, I don't want to spend 20 million dollars to put a Band-Aid on this school either. But something's gotta be done to it. So something in my mind is better than nothing.
Couple of questions that, that came up. You know, the city hasn't told us that we have to be under 23 million, but they've given us pretty clear guidelines because it's their desire to continue to have a high bond rating for the good of the future of the city. So we, we really don't have a lot of room in order to, to do much, especially the scenarios that were laid out tonight. But I think it was Gail that asked the question. If we by consensus make a decision that we do not want to consolidate, then we have a whole nother set of work to do.
Yes.
If that blows up and doesn't make much sense, I can't imagine that we could not come back and revisit to make a better prudent decision if, if the other things didn't fall in place like they need to. Dr. Parrish, do you think I'm speaking out of turn with that? I mean, we're not, we're not signing anything in blood tonight if we would make a decision or in December or anything. I mean, if, if it was illogical, the city would understand that we need to come back and revisit.
So just so that I understand what you're saying is let's say tonight, you say we're gonna take consolidation off the table and pursue the middle school work. And then once you see what you, you know, what you're able to, to do at the middle school based on what you want to do and what the dollars are, if it's not enough for you to make the fixes you want on the middle school, could you come back and say, okay, now we want to come back and have the consolidation conversation again? Is that, is that, did I summarize that?
It's basically, basically, I'm just saying that we, it, this is not an end-all decision. I mean, we're not going down a one-way tunnel and can't come back.
Yeah, I, I think that you certainly could, could come back to it if you wanted to. If the, your discussion of the middle school, the decisions you made, it'll, it'll take some time for, for us as a division to figure out exactly what we would do at the middle school, exactly what it would cost, what are our needs. I mean, we've, I think we've got a good general outline, but we would really need to get into specifics. And so we'd have to work with an architecture firm to do the initial program study and then.
At a cost, right?
I think that would, yeah, at a cost.
At a cost.
That cost is not great. We have, like, not huge. We can certainly absorb that in our budget this year. Thank you for the increase in enrollment this year. And then after that, if what we're looking at doing, you can put an RFP on the street of this is what we want done to the middle school, you know, and then we get the bids in to say we can design that, we can design that for you.
I think, Dr. Parrish, when that, that process will allay the fears that we're putting a Band-Aid on it. Cause I think at 15 million, it's not a Band-Aid, but we'll have to see with our own eyes and see how that works out. But I think that will put some fears to rest.
And I just, just so you understand, if, I just want to sort of jump in, but if you're gonna move forward with consolidation, then what you have to do is you have to pick one of these options. And then you've got to present that as the option that you want to do as a board. And then you have to have a public hearing on it. And after that public hearing, you would actually vote, vote on that, vote on consolidation. And it would be a vote on that option, yes or no. Tonight, what you can do is by consensus. So you're not in a regular meeting with a formal vote, decide do we want to not move forward with consolidation at this point and really go into a study of what we would do with the middle school and move through that process. You could come back to the consolidation again. I just want to make sure that you understand, cause I talked to our attorney about this, understand that, you know, if you're going to, if you want to consolidate, then there's this, we've got to, then you've got to keep going down the consolidation path and you've got to decide which of these, oh, sorry, which of these you, you want to do so that people could come to the public hearing and speak to these before you actually vote. So I'm just gonna hypothetically, you choose option B. That, you know, we explained to the community what we're looking at doing and why. You have the public hearing and then you would actually vote, do we do option B or not do option B? That's what, so if you're gonna actually vote on consolidation formally as to which option you want to do, that would be in your regular meeting. But you can on consensus decide, we're not gonna move forward with consolidation, even take it to a vote in a meeting, we're gonna move forward with figuring out what we'll do with the middle school. And like Mr. Cass said, you could then say, well, this isn't what we wanted. We want to go back to the consolidation table again to see what we can do. I know I've probably muddied the waters, but I, I just want to make sure you understand the process.
The only risk I can see in that is if we did circle back, for some reason, the, the timing seemed to be better suited for the city to entertain this at this point. And, you know, that's the only risk I can see. But it doesn't take it off the table that, you know, that something just is so out of whack, we're like, okay, we didn't make the right decision, let's circle back. But.
And it would also take a lot of time. If, if we did consolidation, it's gonna take a lot of time to get these schools ready for consolidation. It's not all tomorrow or once we voted, we close the middle school and we start shifting students around. It's gonna take some time for the architectural and engineering work to put the project out to bid, to construction to start, all of that. I mean, you're talking, what, two, three years, maybe more?
Yeah, probably more because it'll take even just to do the A and E work, architecture and engineering work, at least a full year. And then.
Right.
We did the consensus vote. It got to me and another question was brought up and I never got to express, but I'm not for continuing consolidation. So that puts us that we do have a majority, but for a decision like this, I would love to have complete consensus, but I don't know if we will ever get there. Does anybody feel like, and Jeremy, I heard you say getting additional information with the architects. That's why I mentioned the cost. There, there is going to be a cost to that piece also, sitting down with the program of studies and all that. So that additional information will take a while, a long while probably. And there would be a cost to it and delay and risk our relationship with the city, which I think is so strong, it'd be hard to risk our relationship. But.
I'm not sure, again, small brain, I get it over here. But I'm not sure what more we could ask to make it different. It's the cost picture that in my mind doesn't work. And also we're talking about five or 700 more students in 10 years, which was, was really a shock to me last month. If we're, if we're staying flat now, different thing in my, different decision in my mind. We're, we're, you know, everyone's saying we're kicking up here. And I think this year has shown they might be right. So those two things, I don't know what we could ask for to make it more clear. I mean, the other thing that we have to factor is, you know, I mean, is the what if, you know, if we have another impact to housing and the economy. I mean, being in that business every day in and day out, I mean, I've certainly seen a couple of cycles where it could stymie growth, but.
Would it be, Board, would it be helpful? We didn't have to make this decision tonight. Would it be helpful just to put it on another work session agenda for the December meeting? And then we, by consensus, force a decision that night? I mean, if it ends up 5, 2, 4, 3, or 3, 4 flips the other way, but we at least know a point in time. We know how some folks feel. I don't know if that would be helpful or not. I just don't want to shove a decision through here tonight. This, the consensus decision, Dr. Parrish, does not have to be voted on.
Correct. You're just gathering consensus to decide if you want to move it forward. I'll give you a good example. You all, I don't think any of you are on the board, but we did the, the research about charging tuition for students. We did all that research and brought it into multiple work sessions. And then the consensus of the board was, we don't want to move this forward to a regular meeting for a vote because we know that we, you know, at this point, we don't want to let tuition paying students come from outside. So that's an example on a smaller scale of how that works.
Well, if we were to do that at the December meeting, I know in past meetings, when you brought up things, you made recommendations. Your thoughts on this decision at that meeting? Or are you able to do that tonight?
Well, I can tell you now, I mean, I can tell you now that the, the, you know, trying to keep the city within the financial guidelines of 23 million dollars is, I think is important for this community. Because realize that no matter what, if they borrow 23 million dollars, there will be a tax increase on the community just to do that. So I, I think, I think our community is very supportive of our schools. And I think that they see needs that we have. And so I, I would. And so I, I would hope they would support if, for the portion of the 23 million that goes to our, to the schools, maybe it's to do the middle school, or if there's some way to change these scenarios. You know, I would hope that they would support it. But I do think it's important that we recognize the financial guidelines that the cities have and working in concert with them. I do also know we have other things on our CIP. And the city does have important things on their CIP. And the reality is in our city that there's only so much that they can borrow and so much that, you know, that can be done financially. And, you know, we're at a place now where we can fund things on a CIP or look at doing something either through consolidation or with the middle school. And 10 years ago, when I first came, we were, there was just no way we could hold that discussion. So the city's done a really good job in managing their finances to get to the point where they can talk about borrowing up to that 23 million dollars within their financial guidelines. So, you know, I, I, I really, when looking in, you know, I've had the luxury of going back into the facility study, and, you know, we'll get that to you. But, you know, when we talk about modernization, I, I do believe that we're not just talking about the Band-Aid and painting a wall. That stuff we've done. Like, we've done painting, we've put new flooring down and ripped up carpeting. This is really talking about targeting our building systems. And, and I think we'd have some room to be flexible with space and do some different things. So, you know, in, in my career in a previous location, we did this modernization to buildings. And they turned out, you know, old buildings turned out, you know, really well. So it's, it's something that school divisions do do when trying to build a whole new facility is really costly.
What would be impacted in the modernization plan? Do you say that's 80% of the school, 50%?
Yeah, I believe that actually they're addressing the entire building. So any areas that need the finishing updates and the systems throughout the building. So they're not just talking about fixing the system, the building systems in the old building. It's talking about doing it across the entire facility. And, and, you know, they talk about addressing issues with the brick and, you know, those types of things. The one thing I will tell you, because we dug in again, is they talk about fixing and doing repairs and some changes to the roofing system. They don't have in there a full replacement of the roof in the old facility, older facility. So we would, I would recommend that if we go down this route, that we take that to, as part of the programming with the architect and say, okay, let's cost that in. And it may mean shifting some other things, but, so that that roof is taken care of as part of the work that would be done to the middle school. That's one thing that I think would be important. But I, you know, going back to what Mr. Cass said, we are going to have to spend some money to get a sense of what we'll do to the middle school and what that would cost us. But my hope is at least the initial study that we could do and getting some initial information wouldn't be too costly, such that we do all that and, and you as a Board say, well, this just isn't enough for us for the middle school. We want to go back to the table. That you could go back to the table, and then maybe you have a conversation or we looked. I don't, I just don't know what other scenarios we can come up with for this consolidation scenarios. But unless we dig in and try and see if there's something else that's been done with it. I mean, if it, I don't know if this will help you or not. It's, when Steve Pappas and I were doing some work to prepare for today, we found an old presentation where back in, I think it was 2000, there was conversation in the city about making the whole school complex at one location. So essentially, you're doing some of this consolidation. And, and at that point, you know, for financing, again, it looks like, I wasn't in the meeting, I'm reading a PowerPoint presentation. But, you know, it was going to be a challenge to try and do that. So Boards and councils in the city have struggled with this question. And every time, they don't go to the consolidation. But the difference here this time is you've got a new elementary school that's taken care of. Your primary school's in good shape. We've done HVAC work in that building, thanks to money from the city this past year. Your high school's in great condition. Mr. Pappas's and the maintenance department do tremendous work. So now it's the middle school, if you go to the four schools. So you are talking about doing something to the middle school. You're not like, oh, we'll just paint the walls and move on from that. So I don't know if that's helpful to you, but-
Dr. Parrish, I hate to ask you again, but I didn't-
Which way do I lean?
I didn't really know which-
Yeah, I, I would, I would lean to, because of the dollars that I've put back up here on the screen, that nothing is under the 23 million. Your closest is 23 million. But then you can't do anything else in the school division or in the city. I would lean at this point to taking consolidation off the table and looking at what you can do to the middle school. And I, like I said, I think Mr. Cass raised a point. It doesn't mean, you're not going to start doing work to the middle school. It doesn't mean you couldn't come back and say, it's not enough for the middle school. Now we want to look at taking it offline. Because one thing I will say is from listening to you, it sounds to me that those that are really concerned about, you know, what would we actually do to the middle school means that you're looking at doing either option C, D, or E on here. Because if you do A or B, you're talking about doing the same thing to the middle school that we're talking about doing to the middle school without consolidating. So if that helps you through the thought process, that's what I'm hearing from you all. So if you did decide to come back to the table after looking at what would the middle school modernization really make a difference at the middle school, to me, you'd be looking at those three options. I don't know if that's helpful, I'm just sort of sitting back here listening to you.
I heard a couple of times from the middle of the Board that, you know, I don't want to put a Band-Aid on the middle school. I don't think that's what we're talking about here. I don't, that's what I'm seeing. I need to re-review the detail, like I mentioned, my, my notebook's out in the car, about the middle school itself. But I don't think any of these, even the 15 million dollar version, I don't think it's a Band-Aid. You know, big change. And you can give us maybe 20, 25 more years at least on that school, so.
It still leaves in place some, some things that, that are issues.
Sure.
That, that, frankly, in my opinion, should be rectified. But, I mean, there's obviously no way to get to that point. Talking about not doing anything to the gym floor, I mean, there was water in the gym floor, you know?
Well, Mr. Pappas actually had an idea, which I'm not sure I could describe it to you because I don't remember it all in detail, about a way to elevate the gym floor. So it's, it is higher without raising the roof, actually. So we'd have to check to see if it would hurt, which Mr. Jordan could probably answer the question, basketball or volleyball. But there, he had actually an interesting solution we'd have to talk to architects about.
Yeah, I think we have some flexibility. If I'm hearing Dr. Parrish right, once we decide we're going to look at the middle schools exclusively, we can kind of juggle priorities, right? With what we kind of want to do.
Oh, within the, yeah.
With the auditorium and the gym floor and the specific-
Parrish, if we, just to be clear, say we, we decided to go with not consolidating, went with option three, this 16 million, that's not a guarantee by city council.
No, you'll have to, you know, make the request, the formal requests. And, you know, you probably would have some conversation in a joint meeting to say, this is what we'd like to do, you know, and this is the, the funding, you know, we'd like to request and get a sense from them of, oh, we can see, see that occurring. But yes, ultimately, you have to request a city council for whatever funding you're asking for, no matter which, whether you consolidate or don't consolidate. They're going to have to provide that funding to you.
They might say no.
It could. I mean, I, I think from your joint meeting, they were, earlier this fall, pretty supportive of trying to do something. But it is going to be, no matter what happens, borrowing a lot of money and-
They could come back and say, okay, you might not have 15, nine, but you have 13, two. I mean, I, I know that I kept focusing on the number. And in my conversation, and they're like, you're, you're focusing on the wrong thing. It's up to us to figure out how we can, what we can do to afford it. It is your job to figure out if we need to go that route. So, and I hate to keep reiterating, but that's, you know, what they kept telling to me when I was asking questions.
So I would envision you would come to the, I mean, ultimately, you may have an initial conversation, but ultimately, you would say, hey, this is, this is, we'll call it modernization. We want to modernize the building, and this is what that includes. You know, will you support that, it'll cost about X, will, will you support that financially for us?
Technically, if we had to, could we cut something at, to get that cost down?
Yeah, you can, you, you can do whatever you want with that. You could do whatever you want with the middle school. This was just to give you, this study was done, and I do think it gives you a good framework of, you know, here's what immediate repairs would look like versus, you know, little, a little more versus modern. Yeah, you can, as a Board, you can do anything.
Is because if they, if, if you said, you know, hey, we'd like to go with the modernization route, but they came back and said, we can't do it, but we can do 13 million. It doesn't mean we're like dead in the water. We just have to kind of reevaluate. And maybe five, 10 years from now, we go back and say, okay, well, we didn't, like the option 3A, the extra 7 million. Well, we could do it maybe now, but maybe 10 years from now or whatever, we might be in a better shape to kind of go back and finish what we didn't do the first time.
But yeah, you could work, you know, and you could, probably in design with architects, say, we want to design, kind of like what they did with the elementary school, but it didn't really work. You could say, we want to design in knowing, let's say, we didn't want to do the locker rooms in the back or the team room, that we want it to design in that we could add that. Because in the elementary school, the design was such, they could add a sixth grade wing. But the swale then was put next on those, you're facing the building, the far left-hand side. So it actually would take a lot of work now to add that wing. So I wasn't, I don't know how that all transpired. That was before I arrived. But, so yeah, you could do that. I mean, and, and, you know, actually, that raises another point, is there's been a lot of discussion in the community about doing something with the middle school to support all the activities that go on the field behind it, the fieldhouse notion, the lot, the bathrooms, all that. So that could be part of your, you could look to say, if that's a priority for the community, because like, you know, even three, not A, but three includes some fixing of those facilities behind there, that that becomes part of that project as well. Whereas if you consolidate and, and go to either C, D, or E, the middle school's not in play and, you know, it would be sort of surplus to the city and they would do what they would with it. But there what, there has been conversation, because folks have said, well, when are we going to do a fieldhouse? Or even the wrestling room? Well, let's wait to see what we do at the middle school, because we might be able to address it as part of that. So there is that component out there in the community as well.
That was funny. I was at the Thanksgiving meal, and I was behind a table and heard them talking about this new fieldhouse. It had already been by the school board, and I was just sitting there laughing. I was like, I never even heard anything about the fieldhouse, you know? But it was, it was funny, because you're like the second, second person that's mentioned it, but it was funny.
So you have not-
Was it done yet?
Yeah, no, there's no fieldhouse that's been approved by the school board. Rest assured. If there is, I don't know about it.
Still feel the same way you felt before? I mean-
I mean, I just never envisioned a renovation on the middle school.
Two months ago?
Having toured it.
Neither did I.
But, yeah. I mean, there's only, there's only so much that we, I mean, I certainly understand the debt guidelines, so.
Like you, there was only one decision that I'd been happy with, is to burn it down, demolish it, do something. But, but obviously-
Fire department, new trucks.
I meant like, I think we could use as a exercise. But again, at the end of the day-
Old saying, money talks, right?
That's right, that's right.
And that's where I was before last month.
Yep.
When, when the, the students were on the rise, that got my attention. And these numbers makes it clear to me what I think, you know? But I was with, exactly what you were saying, in what it was, September, I guess, right?
Yeah, and I can say, you know, for what it's worth, I was the same way. And then when we saw an increase in enrollment for the first time since 2006 this year, and then with the projections in the housing, I was like, huh, well, this is important data. But here's what I say to you. This is why it's so important that we waited and why that consolidation committee said, wait until, they said 2016. So we're in 2017 to make the decision, let's see what happens. So what I can say is I'm really happy. I feel like some of you have been on the boards as you've waited. Some of you weren't there yet, but it makes me proud that the boards along the way, that was the right decision.
I mean, we're also, though, factoring in the fact that, you know, the economy is at one of its strongest points. It's been with the stock market and, you know, with, with growth and unemployment, but being at the lowest point. But, but yeah. I hope it stays too.
Open to get consensus? Has anything changed? Anything? No, we still have at least one, two dissenting.
My vote is that we ought to do this again next month. We need to move on with it, with, if we can move on with the documentation or the research into the middle school, I would like to see that next month. I don't want to do this again next month, just wasting time.
Yeah, and I have to tell you, I don't know that we could have that for you.
I see.
Like the program, program study for your next Board meeting. Because I don't know how long that'll take, but it will take a little bit of time. And we're on a shorter window because we bumped our meeting out. So we're so worried. No, it's okay, it was the right decision to do it. Just realize that we have fewer weeks in between the meeting than, than we usually do, by a week.
One thing I'm sure of is, I think we're a priority right now with the city. But if we delay much further, Chief Bowen's going to have a new police station.
Well, that's the thing, because it's holding up.
That's true. That's true, too.
I love Chief Bowen.
And I do appreciate my colleagues, their, their concern. Because it is, it is a hard decision, and it affects a lot of people and over a lot of time. But I really don't think, I don't see anything that changed that they could present that would change your decision for four weeks from now or whenever our next meeting is.
So can we move forward with a majority and then start the work on what the middle school situation would look like? Knowing we could always get out.
In work session, can you make motions and vote?
Yeah, you, no, you don't need to motion and vote, you're just doing it by consensus.
But what's the definition of consensus?
You have it, five, over two?
Majority.
It's majority?
Is it majority?
Got a majority now.
I didn't know if consensus, the true definition of consensus is consensus. Maybe I should have phrased it differently. All right, five, I guess it's five to two. Does that sound right?
So are we, with that said, then, at this point, not that you can't go back, we're going to move forward with having conversations about the middle school? All right, so what I will do is talk to the city manager because, get a sense of from the city, next steps. We did, you may remember, tentatively schedule a joint council board meeting for December. So it may be now having that meeting would be a good idea. And so I'll talk to him about that and get information out to you. Once I've talked to him, and then we can timeline out information for you.
Was there a date on that? Can, did I lost?
There was, I don't have it, but I will get it to you. I don't have it in my head. It might be the 11th, if that's a Monday. So I think it's that day.
Yes. I don't know how you feel about the remaining three agenda items. Is, is, is that something that could be expressed to us through a superintendent's report that could be emailed to us?
I could-